Um, welcome everyone to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Thursday, March 11th, 2021. There are four school committee members present. Unfortunately, Mike Flaherty is out of town, um, taking care of a family member, so he is unable to join us tonight. Of course, he regrets not being able to be here. We will start the meeting just by saying that the meeting is being recorded by WCTV. We are using Zoom, so uh, the votes will be done by roll call. Uh, the meeting is being broadcast by WCTV also. So the first item on the agenda is public participation. And we'll just take a look and see if there's anyone, if there's anyone here who wishes to address the committee, just raise your hand in the attendees section so that I can see you and know that you'd like to speak. Just wait a second, because I know this is new for everyone, including me. But no, it doesn't look like anyone is here to speak to us tonight, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is good news. Would anyone like to share any good news? Okay.
Um, I just want to report out that the data that I've collected of our second assessment within our system is looking really good. I am pleasantly surprised and really proud of the hard work everyone has done to keep our kids up to speed. Um, so it's pretty exciting to see that, that, you know, maybe in the state, kids are falling behind, but in Wareham, there there are kids that will struggle and will definitely pull them up, but not nearly what um, what we feared. So uh, those skills are still being taught and they're doing really well.
Well, that is great news. Thank you for sharing. Um, I just want to say that last week during public participation, um, Deanna Semple was here and we had some conversation and it was mentioned about um, you know, the union and, and the district having conversations. And I just want to say the good news is that there have been many conversations, you know, as we move towards all the changes that are coming, which we will hear more about tonight. I just want to say that I really appreciate that there has been a lot of conversation happening, a lot of great conversation. Okay, if there's no other good news, we will move on to the report of the student representative Emily Roberge. Hi Emily.
Hi, everyone. Alright, so I just wanted to talk about um, just the um, extended day. So as we know, like last meeting, we moved to extend the school day, um, starting this week actually. Um, and me personally, I'm in cohort B, so that means that my first full day as opposed to Monday. Um, it was definitely the class times, um, were definitely uh, quite a change from our previous 50 minute. Um, so that was a big difference, but I did notice that it gave me more time to complete assignments and um, ask questions. Um, and it's also plus that students don't have to like go home and then hop on a Zoom call after they'd like, have already gone to school. Um, and lunch was also introduced, so that was definitely a weird experience. It was very quiet, um, but it was handled super well by staff and the cafeteria workers. Um, we were all seated safely and we were given bag lunches. And I, when I was in one of my classes, I think it was during the passing time between um, first lunch and second lunch, and I heard like a bunch of like rowdy kids in the hallway. And like usually like while you're learning, it would be like, you know, come on guys, be quiet, but it was actually, it was comforting. Um, it makes me really look forward to um, everything opening up again. Um, and so we're going back to mom, so I really think that we're on to something. So I wanted to turn that, thank you.
Thank you Emily, that's really great to hear. I think we lost her.
Yeah, she froze.
Sorry, am I frozen?
No, you're unfrozen now. I'm sorry, were you finished with your report? I couldn't tell if you were finished or if you were frozen.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm, I'm finished. It's it's looking good. I think we really get more, so yeah.
That's great news. Thanks for sharing that with us.
Yeah, of course.
Alright, so we will move on to um, the minutes of our meeting from February 25th, 2021. Does anyone have any questions or changes to those minutes? They'd like to talk about? Okay, then I'll just ask for motion to approve. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, April.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So four zero zero, thank you. Alright, and the next item on the agenda is an update on the elementary school building project with Chad Quinton and Mark Adrian from PMA. So Steve, we'll just ask you to uh, bring them in, thank you. Welcome Chad, welcome Mark, I can't see Mark, but.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
There he is, yes.
Alright, um, are we able to share screen real quick? Mark has some uh, photos to walk through.
Steve is able to do that? Here we go.
Alright, well, Mark gets that lined up. Um, thank you very much for having us this evening. We have uh, some exciting uh, news and updates on the elementary school project. Um, so at this point in the project, we are approaching the 70% completion milestone.
Wow.
Financially, the project's in great shape. We have 82% of the project's contingency uh, left untouched. Uh, so we're in really, really good shape there. And then on the schedule side of things, the contract completion date uh, as we all know, is mid-October, that's substantial completion, and then um, we have to move furnishings and technology into the building that takes uh, six to eight weeks, and then we move the actual uh, items from the existing buildings and belongings into the new school. Uh, so the, the target is to have students and staff in that new building, January of 2022. Uh, on the construction end, we're, we're tracking around six weeks ahead of schedule, uh, so substantial completion would occur the first week of September. And then we have a few months of furnishing technology, but after that, uh, our hope is that the building is turned over and available for people to really get up and get in and set up their spaces and uh, the community to familiarize themselves with the building. Um, with that, I'll turn it over to Mark and he can run through some of the latest construction photos and uh, after that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
Alright, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Alright, we have uh, some new photos to show you guys tonight. These are actually just a few hours old, they were taken today. So I'll get right into it. Uh, first, what I'm gonna do is gonna go around the exterior of the building so everybody can see, and then we'll move to the inside. So uh, this is right as you would come up to the main entrance of the school. Uh, you can see the glasses in and um, the facade of the building is, is nearly complete. There's only a few areas left where they have to do some direct applied finishes. Uh, but this is the, the feel and the look of the brand new school from the front. Alright, so this is looking uh, at the B wing of the school, so on this lowest level, this would be the pre-K and kindergarten areas. This first floor here would be first and second grade, or I'm sorry, first grade, and then the second floor here would be second grade. So again, just gives you a, a nice idea of what the outside of the building's going to look like. If you turned on your heel, this would be looking at the D wings. This is gonna house the third and fourth graders. Then, as we kind of wrap around the school, see a lot of the nice brickwork here in this photo. And as we wrap around the back of the school, kind of continues on. So again, this would be uh, the backside of the school in grades three and four. As you move a little bit further, you can see the back of our cafeteria here, so this will be all glass and finished condition. You can see out while you're eating lunch. As we continue on, this is uh, now, let's see, the east side of the school, so this faces Brandy Hill. And uh, in the final condition, there'll be play equipment here, and this'll be cleaned up nice. And actually, a couple of pavilions and picking tables and things out there. Two, and this is the uh, entrance exit, how those kids would access that play area. And now we're gonna wrap into the school. So right as you come through those front doors that I showed you in the first photo, uh, this would be the lobby area with the main stair going up to the second floor innovation hub. As you can see now, in these photos, uh, sheet rock has been applied and they're starting to tape and mud the joints, and next up will be paint in this area. Now, if you were to look straight up in the same position, you would see our brandy skylight that just got put in in this past week. Uh, lets a lot of nice natural light down into the lobby area. And let's see, if you took a right, you'd be heading down towards the D wing hallways. This is looking right down what would be the third grade corridor. You can see there's lighting up on the ceiling, uh, paint has been applied. And what you're seeing on the floor here is a protective covering that's protecting the brand new terrazzo floors that have been put in. And uh, let's see, we can see some of the breakout spaces in the hallways in this photo as well. So you move on, um, in this hallway, this is one of the student bathrooms, you can see the tile on the wall, green to match with the terrazzo and the paint colors as well. And looking back down the hallway, the opposite direction, again, you can see some of the millworks and the cabin tree being put in. And this is another one of those breakout spaces in the hallway. Now, moving upstairs, I couldn't really show you the fourth grade wing, because they're actually actively doing the terrazzo as we speak, so I couldn't walk down there, but up here in the innovation hub, this is one of the art rooms. Uh, so you can see these big openings will house some, some sectional doors, some like garage doors that will be actually transparent. If you were to turn on your heel once more, this is a small reading area in the innovation hub that they're finishing. Now, if we go to the end of that space, did I skip over one? This is actually the roof deck, which is right outside the steam room. So they'll be able to, kids will be able to take their projects outdoors, this area. Now going down into the B wing, I believe this is the second floor, so this is gonna be the second grade corridor here. You can see uh, very similar to the D wing, just a, a change of colors. This is a typical classroom inside the B wing. You can see ceiling grid is up, they still need to put some acoustical tiling up in this area and continue with finishes, but if you turn once again on your heel, you can see the millwork going in, countertops, sink is in, fixtures are actually in now as well. And on the opposite side, we've got markers and tack boards going up as well, which is very exciting. So back out into the hallway, uh, this is one of the student restrooms, uh, so now in the B wing, we've got a blue tile scheme, which matches the blue paint. And if we were to go down into the pre-K K level, I want to take a quick photo of one of the classrooms down there. So these classrooms are a little bit different in that they have their own toilet rooms in each classroom, as well as a little breakout space here as well. So you would enter the classroom from this door here, there'd be some cubbies in this area to protect your belongings, and then you'd be in the classroom. Uh, now I quickly wanted to show the uh, the auditorium side of the cafeteria, which is why we call it a cafeteria. Here, you've got the stage area, and there's a handicap ramp going up here, and the music rooms are just beyond the back of this space. And if you turn and look the other direction, you've got the rest of the cafeteria here. So you, again, you can see uh, sheet rock is up and next will be tape and mud. And to kind of round out this quick little tour, I just took a couple of quick photos of the main administration area. So right as you come in, uh, that main lobby, if you were to turn around and look backwards, you'd see reception right here. And just beyond reception would be the principal's offices, the assistant principal's offices, conference room, workroom, mailroom, all the sort of front end uh, spaces of the school. There's one last photo here showing some paint colors going up on the walls as well. And that's about all I've got for you tonight. Did you guys have any questions?
Well, it looks great.
Thanks Joyce.
Amazing, it's really amazing. Um, I can't see all the members of the committee. Does anyone have any questions for Chad or Mark?
I don't, but I just want to say, I, it looks amazing, and the difference from when we had done our walkthrough um, a few months ago to seeing where it is now and just knowing it will be, it's six weeks ahead of schedule is pretty amazing.
Um, yeah, it's just to, to go from, you know, looking at the designs for so long to seeing the building, it's really, it's, it's, every time I see it, it's, it's amazing. Um, and the fact that it's, like she said, ahead of schedule, under budget. You, you know, you guys are doing a great job between PMA and Mount Vernon. It's really going so well. We appreciate you taking the time to come here tonight and share these pictures with us and.
No problem for having us.
So what is that, what is the next, what is the next big step here? Did you already say that Chad, is it?
Yep, so next big step for us, um, the general contractor will turn over the building uh, early September, right now is the current scheduled date. And uh, we're currently working with the educators and the architects to select the furnishings, uh, fixtures, equipment, technology that will go into this building, so those bid packages uh, will be hitting the street shortly and um, all that stuff will be ready to get trucked in and installed in the new building right as the general contractor is wrapping up their scope work. So yeah, very exciting.
It is. And thank you for, I know Mark, you're doing the, the monthly tour and Chad is the man behind the scenes answering all the questions, but that's been really helpful. I've gotten a really, a lot of feedback from a lot of people that they really appreciate um, those videos and, you know, helping everyone get a, get a look inside the building, it's great. And just watching them from month to month, you know, you, you see such a difference. Kevin, did you have something?
I just wondering, I know you said January is the target date, is there any chance that it would be inhabitable before then?
I think the challenge is, is finding that period to move everything out of the existing buildings and into the new building. It's, it's not something that happens overnight, right? So, we could potentially shoot for one of the earlier breaks. Uh, the longest break is gonna be the Thanksgiving break. It's, it's very, very challenging to move an entire, in this case, two buildings into that one building and get the spaces set up. Uh, so no, we're, we're not completely, uh, it's not out of the picture, but there are challenges, challenges associated, and really, everything needs to fall right into place. So I think.
When is landscaping done? What part, is that like the fa- early fall, or when do you do that?
Uh, so they've actually remobilized now that the weather's turned a corner, the site contractor is back on site, they're gonna start their uh, finished grading and start putting down some of their finished landscape materials. Uh, footings for the play equipment are not far away, they're a few months out, or weeks out rather. Um, the only thing that we would need to wrap up, some of the plantings are fall hazards, so they need to be planted in the fall. Uh, others are spring hazards, so we can get those in the spring, but uh, the stuff that can't be planted until the fall, well, we'll obviously have to hold off until then, but yeah, the building itself can be uh, completed and we can get a certificate of occupancy for the, the, the building.
Thank you.
Alright, so we will look forward to your next update.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Alright, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is um, the code of ethics, which we did talk briefly about last time. So we have it again in the packet, and I guess I would just say, um, as an explanation, maybe for those those who are listening who don't know exactly what it is, is when we are elected as school members, uh, there is an association and we belong to that association, and they provide us with the training um, that is required, and as part of that training, they do issue policies um, surrounding school committee and our duties and our responsibilities. And there really isn't a handbook for school committee members in the town of Wareham. The MASK, the association, they do have a s- uh, school committee handbook, and this is part of that. So this would just be a first step, and, and maybe someday we will be able to have a handbook in Wareham, and that will provide guidance, not only for school committee members, but for members of the public, you know, to understand what we as school committee members do. So, that is why um, we're, we're talking about this tonight, so I guess I would just ask, do any of the members have questions, comments about this? This comes directly from, um, from MASK.
I, I just feel that it's redundant. We have to take that, um, you know, as, as a sort of, even though we're not employees, you know, every town employee takes the code of ethics through the state. Um, and I think it goes without saying, a lot of these, these policies um, are kind of a, an unwri- you know, an unwritten rule. I don't know that we necessarily need to have something in place that says, be ethical. I think it's kind of insulting. I would hope that anyone who would be a member, but it's not necessarily, I, I understand where you're coming from. I do agree with most of this. The wording, um, I would, I would want to more write our own, there's some of the wording that I just am not comfortable voting for. Um, I think the way that it's written makes it, we, we're voted by the, the, the community, and a lot of this, the way that some of this wording is, is it makes it seem like if a community member reaches out to one of us, um, because they have an issue or they feel that we're a safe person to, to vent it, sort of, it makes it seem like we're not a safe person for them to come to, and I, I just am not, not comfortable with the wording. I'm not opposed to revisiting this or putting a subcommittee together to work on a handbook for Wareham um, school committees to go over policies and procedures and things, but on its own, I'm just not comfortable with it 100%, just because some of the wording, um, it just makes it seem like it's not as community friendly in my opinion.
But I guess I would, well, go ahead Mary.
Oh, I guess my, that's my general question, do the other boards have this?
Yes, yes. So uh, the town of Bourne, they have this exact.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I did, I wasn't clear on my question. The other boards in Wareham, like the selectmen?
Well, I don't know what they, they have a handbook. I've never read it, but I've seen that they do have one, yes.
I, I think I'd like to take a look at what the other boards in Wareham actually have.
But I guess theirs would be specific to whatever their duties are. I mean, I don't know. I know that MASK, you know, we receive our training and our instructions from MASK. I don't know where they receive theirs from. I have no idea. Um, so, I guess I would, I would just say that we, I mean, if we were gonna have a handbook, wouldn't we want it to go by MASK? They are the ones who interpret the law and train us on that law, so this, this reflects that. I mean, I wouldn't be comfortable rewriting it because they've written it per the law. And it does say should, it doesn't say if you don't, you will be penalized in some way, you know, it says should, because that's the guidance that they give us. And again, this is one of, of many policies that could make up a handbook um, for school committees. So April, I, I appreciate that you said, you know, you'd want to make a subcommittee, but I, I wouldn't myself personally be comfortable rewriting what they've written, because they're the experts. You know, that's why.
I'm not necessarily saying rewrite, I would say the, the, the bones of it. I would, for our, for purposes of our committee, would like to just have, you know, and, and also not having the full committee here to vote on it. Um, I would just, I, I wouldn't, I'm not comfortable voting on as is. Um, I would definitely rather, you know, either reach out to MASC and see if other committees in the state have um, an amended version, or if they use the full version. I just feel like there's just not enough information, whereas we all do um, the charting the course, the trainings with MASC, we all have to take the state required for working in a municipality ethics test. I just feel like it's sort of, it, like I said, I feel like it's sort of redundant, and I feel like some of the wording makes it um, almost more difficult and less friendly for us to be a representative of the committee. It's sort of, um, you know, I know it says right in it in quotes to, you know, with no intent to play politics, but I feel that this is an, is actually an intent to play politics. So I just, I'm, I may be misinterpreting it, I may be looking at it in a completely different way than other people. Um, I just, you know, I, I, I wouldn't want it necessarily in its entirety without having reviewed it line by line with the, the remaining members of the committee.
I would, I would just add that the state ethics test that we take doesn't really address like 75% of the things that are in here, because this is germane just to school committees, where the other ones are more about conflict of interest. This is more about what school committees are intended to do, the spirit and intent of the, uh, what a school committee does. And I would say we use MASK language all the time in the policy subcommittee for all of our other uh, policies that we have. So it just finds it strange we wouldn't use MASK to have a policy about, about us. We use it all the time for all the other um, committees.
Well, in the history of, of Wareham School Committee, this has never needed or never been up, you know, a- as far as I'm aware, I mean, like I said, I could be wrong, but why wouldn't it have been something that had been there before if this is something that's been there the whole time? So it's just, I, I just, I don't know. I don't know necessarily if it's coming out the way I'm intending it to come out, like, I understand, like, I'm not saying, oh, let's not be ethical. Obviously, we should be ethical and we should follow, you know, all of the, the MASC rules, and I understand our, our primary responsibility, yes, is to the kids in the town, that is the number one. Um, and to, to not comment things from a political perspective, that's obviously, for me, that's a, a no-brainer, but I think that it, just like I said, some of the wording, the way that I interpret it, is it's sort of deterring people who may have had issues coming to us um, for help, forming those bonds of trust where they may have feel that they haven't, that there, maybe that their concerns have fallen on deaf ears prior, and they may find trust in either a different member of the committee to sort of help them. It just seems like this, not help them necessarily, obviously, we can't do anything and act on our own. But when people come to, with their concerns from the community or um, from, you know, the, the district or things like that, and they feel like, you know, they need that kind of confidentiality or that um, that person to sort of, like, okay, I'm having an issue with this, I don't necessarily want to go through this channel, but I just want it to be heard. I feel like some of the wording in this would deter them from, you know, reaching out to members of the committee for help, should they need to.
But, but this wording.
How I interpret it.
This is for.
I don't know, I don't take that as an ethical standpoint. I think our job, I, I understand that the main priorities of a school committee are um, policy, budget, and the evaluation of the superintendent. Absolutely, those are our three, our, our, our roles, and that's completely understandable, but I feel like a school committee also has, you know, the responsibility to the people that voted them into into office and to help when people feel like their concerns need to be heard. And I just, I feel like I said, that some of the, the language in this, to me, seems like it is, it's not promoting that sort of um, community trust. So that's the only reason that I would want to either, you know, kind of go through it with the full committee line by line, or reach out and see if other districts have modified or used full versions of this, or if they use portions of this, and what another town's handbook would look like for a school committee.
Go ahead Andrew.
I just have a question. I think part of the intent of the document would be to communicate to everyone, everyone in the community, what, uh, what being a school committee member means, right? So if somebody happens to be interested in the position, and they want it, they don't, it's not commonplace for people to know, right? I mean, it's a strange position, there's a lot going on, people don't always know. And so to have this document that indicates their, their, what it is, the intent of the school committee member, I'm wondering if something like this, and I don't, you know, whatever you guys decide, but I'm wondering if that level of communication and having that available to other people might encourage them to be more familiar with the position and understand what they, what's, what they're supposed to do, and what their job is, and then they would be more apt to to, to um, run for a possible election, right? Because I don't think people know. It's not their fault, I just don't think it's communicated effectively, you know?
True, and I guess I would say that this really, this, as far as making changes to it, it's not, it's coming from MASK. It's not really open to interpretation. They've already done that. They are guiding us. That's not up to us to change what they're directing to us. You know, they're our association, we go to them for training. We're not, it's not for us to interpret it and change it. That, that's how I understand it. Um, you know, anytime I've ever gone to any of the trainings that they do, and I know everyone here has, I mean, that, that's how I take it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with, with what they're saying. Like I said, we go to them for direction, so.
Put about, about 90 slides every year, mandated training about their ethics, their behavior, what they're required to do, how they do it, and they've been doing 20 years, they still have to do the mandated training every year and go through what their job responsibilities are ethically. And yeah, you go, yeah, of course, I'm supposed to do that, but we still have to do it, right? We still have to present it. So it's just how we, how, how we operate, I don't know. And it's a good communication tool, anybody new or people who are. And it's a good communication tool. Anybody new or people who got it, or just little reminders or whatever the case may be, a great tool to communicate.
And it, it would just be the beginning and, you know, we, we would build on it from there. So um I guess I will, unless, does anyone else have any questions or comments about it? Mary?
Now, I'm just gonna um comment that I think that I, I agree with April that it would make more sense to have a, a subcommittee to take a look at what the other boards are doing as in other, the school committee boards. Um, and again, I'm just gonna put it out there. I'd like to know what the actual boards in Wareham are doing, whether or not they have anything like this as well.
My, my just, my take would be, we should be the ones taking the lead then.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't disagree. I do, like, there is, most of this stuff sounds like is more of a of a, maybe it's the way that's stated as a code of ethics as opposed to um a, a, a school committee role, like what the role is. Maybe it's just the, the way that it's worded. It just comes across like the timing is just very interesting in that it's, it's never happened before and we, if, if this has been a MASC policy for, you know, X, Y, Z amount of years or is, you know, as long as we can know, why are we why have we never had this before? Why is it coming to a vote? Like, why are we bringing this in when this is all information that has always been followed?
It's not new.
What I mean?
Yes, but it's not.
Just like I said, some of the wording, like, for example, no, I know, I know you're saying it's not new, but I'm just curious why it hadn't been something that has been voted up here to now.
Okay, hold on, April. Go ahead, Kim.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that the committee had passed something similar to this several years ago. And then the committee defeated it. Um, I think it was probably two years ago and took it off the table. So this is a different version. The version that was prior was a Wareham version and I, and there was, it was gathered from other communities and put into a document and Warehamized. And now this version came from the mask committee um that other districts have used. So there has been some in the past, one in the past.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. Yes, there was April um a few years ago, there was one, and then it was to be voted on every year and it was not approved. So it's not in place now, but this is not the first time. And as Kim pointed out, the other one was a collection of ones from different districts. This is directly from mask, directly from their policy book with no.
The one where we had signed, had to sign whether or not we agreed with it and we decide, like, people did not sign because of some of the wording previously, because I believe if that, it wasn't it was similar, I think, in nature, but the wording again, and that was stuff that I didn't agree with. So if that was the case, I remember not signing either.
Yes, but as Kim pointed out, you, you had said this, this was new. It's not new. It's not just being brought up now. It's just.
Okay, well, I think like I said before, I think that, that the name of calling it, what it's, what it's titled, I think is throwing, you know, kind of more what it is as a, as opposed to a code of ethics, more than it is a roles and responsibilities. So I think, again, it's just some of the wording. I'm, again, staying with the agreement that I had in the last one. It's just I, I don't necessarily agree with all of the verbiage.
So, okay, but I guess when you say that, so you just, you're disagreeing with the, with the mask guidance that's being put out?
Not the guidance. No, I'm not saying.
This comes right from mask. And, you know, it's okay, we can disagree and we don't have to approve it tonight. We can talk about it. Um but the, like I said, the reason that it was brought forward now in this form is because it comes directly from mask. And I just, I, you know, I think that a lack, the, the, the fact that there is no handbook for school committee members is kind of a void that we have the power, you know, to create. And this was the first step in that, that's all. And, you know, I didn't call it the Code of Ethics, mask did. And gather, every, every other district that adopts it, they, that I've seen, including our neighboring district Born, leaves it in this form, which I think, you know, taking it from mask and leaving it in this form, you know, takes away any interpretation. So next year, when it's five different school committee members, it's not someone, it's not my interpretation, it's not your interpretation, it's mask. And, and with other policies that mask issues, when they change, as you know, as being a member of the Policy Review Committee in the past, when those policies change, we change our policies to match them. So if something were to change in this policy, then mask would tell us that, you know, this policy changed and this is the new language that you should use. It's not up to us to interpret the law or the guidance. They do it for us, that's all. And that's why it's in this form.
Which, which I understand, and I don't necessarily, like I said, I don't necessarily disagree, but I would, I would like to table this. Um, I think that putting it with, if this is to be the start of a handbook, I, I think a subcommittee of um to, to research handbooks in other districts that would be, you know, working instead of voting page by page for a handbook, but come together with something that would be more comprehensive and more uh covering all things that a handbook would cover, wouldn't just, a handbook's not just one page, would be um a better use of, you know, of time and, and kind of instead of putting things together piece by piece and then kind of, you know, delineating different line items that might be redundant from page to page as they come down, instead of just kind of working together and coming up with a handbook and voting on a handbook as a whole, instead of by page by page.
I would just ask, if we can't agree on a one-page document, how are we going to agree on a handbook?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, a subcommittee, but now, so that would be two or three members of our committee making those decisions, when what I've proposed is for all of us, I understand Mike is absent tonight, is for all of us to approve the policy, if, even if it's one by one. But so, so what you're proposing is that a subcommittee could do all of this work in the absence of the other members and then come back and if we don't agree, so.
Well, that's how the policy.
Happens in other subcommittees.
Policy review does the same thing, where they, members of the committee, as well as I, I would think that, like, either having Andrea or Kim or another member join on this subcommittee and possibly, you know what I mean, to kind of, or even have past um school committee members or a member of the finance committee sort of form this subcommittee, a member of the Board of Selectmen, to come together, much like policy review, and put together something more comprehensive and work together to figure out, you know, what works best for Wareham. And I, I just think, in my opinion, I think that that would be a better way to do it. I, again, I know that you guys think that possibly a page by page would work, but I, I would rather have input and have, and look at other things first and come together, you know, like policy review, where they, those individuals go through those policies and then bring them to us to vote. So I just, I just think that that would work.
Okay, okay. Kim, go ahead.
Um, I was just wondering if the intent was just to address the Code of Ethics or if the intent is to develop a handbook for the school committee?
Um, so in, in other districts, policies, there might be a, a section of the policy manual. It might not even be called a school committee handbook, but it's a section of the policy manual that addresses issues having to do with school committees. And we do have some of those as far as minutes and public participation. We do have some of those policies already. So it would just be a collection, it could just be a collection of those policies. It doesn't have to be a handbook.
And I think it would be important to include open meeting law. They, you know what I mean? There's so many other things to it that I think having it as its own handbook would be very, it would have been, it would have been huge for me coming on as a new school committee member a couple of years ago, than having to kind of wait for the charting, the course, because that, obviously, you have to wait for when that works with your schedule and then learning as we go. Um, I'm grateful for all of you for the input that, and the things that I've learned over the last two years have been monumental. And, you know, there's such a wealth of knowledge on every angle in this committee from people that have either, you know, been in the committee for a long time, been in administration, been, you know, on previous committees and things like that. So it's definitely been a, a huge learning curve, but having had something like that where it was more comprehensive, instead of piecemeal, I think as a new member would have made things a little bit more easy to understand.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, it's certainly, we can continue the discussion. Um it is on the agenda for a vote, so we will have a vote and then we'll just, we'll move forward from there. So um, I would just ask if anyone has a motion?
I would move that we adopt the mask state code of ethics as stated by our organization.
Okay. Is there a second?
I would vote to table it, so no.
Okay. So there's no second, so the motion does not carry. Um, April, you can make a motion to table it and bring it up at a, at a future meeting.
I would, I would like to make a motion to table this um and to bring up uh the possibility of forming a subcommittee to create, including this, a handbook for uh school committee for the town of Wareham.
Okay. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Just trying to think of the right, okay. All those in favor, uh, sorry, roll call vote. Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Kevin?
No.
And myself, no. So the vote is two to two. All right, thank you. Um, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a revote of the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Go ahead, Mary.
So can I just ask, where does that leave that? I mean, because it was a tie, so.
So it doesn't care. Um, but certainly it's an important conversation that we can certainly bring up at another meeting. It doesn't mean that we have that conversation again.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll welcome Christine Suko.
Um, so in your packet, you received um a, uh, one pager that showed what you voted on December seventeenth. And um, if you look at it, we actually, the original was thirty million uh four fifty, four fifty-two, six twenty-three with just over two million in non-net. And then in order to budget balance that, we uh looked at using circuit breaker, COVID stabilization. And at the time, we thought the contribution might be six hundred thousand from the town. So you voted thirty million seven oh three oh seven three. I'm asking you tonight to take a revote as the town has graciously given us four point eight percent, which is one million four hundred and twelve, four hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. So the revote would be, the net would be twenty-eight million, seven ninety-two, six twenty-three. And the non-net would still be the two million fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty for a total of thirty thousand, eight forty-three oh seven three.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions for Christine? No? Okay, so I guess I would just, we, we talked about this at our last meeting. I know you gave us the breakdown last, last time and told us, you know, why this number is different. I just want to acknowledge again that in my experience, we are always voting a lesser number. So to be here tonight voting a higher number um is pretty amazing and I'm pretty grateful um to be in this position, to be able to do this.
It is pretty awesome. Thank you, everyone, for being able to pull this together, because it is, it is awesome to see us getting more instead of less.
So I would ask for a motion to approve first the net number of twenty-eight million, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, roll call vote, Kevin?
Well, I need to recuse myself from the net.
Right, sorry, sorry. Okay. Um, Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So three zero one. And then I'll ask for a motion, non-net number, which is two million fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call, April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So four zero zero. And then the total number, which is thirty million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, seventy-three dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, April? Mary?
Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So three zero one. Thank you. Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think Kevin can vote that one.
The total?
Yeah. Oh, no.
No, no. Um, okay, so the next item on the agenda is the collective bargaining agreement with Unit A. So Kevin, will you?
I'll leave the room, but it's part of the.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Shabro.
Okay, thank you. We entered into negotiations with Unit A, which is the teachers. Um, there are two members of the school committee, uh Joyce Bakayaki and Mary Morgan that sit on the committee along with the administrators. And the WVA has their membership negotiating team. We arrived at a temporary uh memorandum of agreement. I hope to make it finalized tonight by a vote of the committee. We have a three-year agreement. Year one, the increase would be two point five. Year two is two point five and year three is two point seven five. Um there are some language changes. We've cleaned up language throughout the contract. We've added one day to the, with the educators' contracts, so they will be teaching five, or working five days without students, so they have a hun, one hundred and eighty-five school day contract. Um, if the committee has any questions, I would be happy to answer. Otherwise, I would ask for a vote of approval.
Okay. Mary or April, do you have any questions?
No, also.
Um, I don't have any questions. I would just say, um, thank you. You know, I, I appreciate being included in that discussion. Negotiating with any group of employees um is one of the most important things I feel that I do as a school committee member. Um, and it was really a privilege to be able to be a part of, of this negotiation, especially at this time. So we'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the MOA.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So three zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and Jamie can ask, can like, have a know that he can come back again. So we'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. First, I would ask that you accept the following gifts, school supplies for Wareham Middle School from Ronald Bessie and Aaron Marks.
Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
A roll call, Kevin?
Yes.
April?
A roll call.
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four zero zero.
Thank you. Next, I would ask the committee to please approve the bill and payroll warrants as listed in the newsletter.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call, Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four zero zero.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to share my screen with you at this point, just to walk you through the rest of my presentation. So if you could bear with me. Okay. Um the first I would like to ask. The first, I would like to ask that you rescind, I gotta find to view. Slideshow, there we go. Okay, I would ask that you vote to rescind the town article for the food service van. When we first came to you, I thought, as did the town, that we had to have this before the town meeting for a vote. But because it's funded by a grant, the vote is not needed. The capital improvement did approve this on a, at a meeting on February 26th. And that gave us the go-ahead to make the purchase. So at this point, I would ask the committee to please rescind their vote that was taken on February 18th.
Okay, is there a motion to rescind that vote?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four, zero, zero.
Thank you. Okay, next, I would ask the committee to please approve the following in retirement incentives that will be paid for this year. These incentives will only be effective this year from this vote. So for Unit A, if a person is retiring, they would receive $12,000. Unit B, it would be 12,000, for Unit C, five, Unit D, five, custodians, five. In cafeteria or bus drivers would be 3,500. If a person is wishing to retire and they have not submitted paperwork, then they would be eligible to collect this money. I would ask one exception be made, that if somebody has put in their papers within the last three months, then this would be applicable. Other than that, it would not, it would not apply. This is irrevocable, and once the paperwork is submitted and I've accepted their, their letter of retirement, it cannot be rescinded. So I asked the committee to please vote to enact these retirement incentives.
Kim, can I just ask a question?
Uh huh.
So you say that it's just this year at this time for this limited window of notification. But I just, to be clear, we did just add this into the new MOA with Unit A.
Correct.
So that, it's listed on here, but it's not necess- it's not a one-time thing for that unit?
Right, but for the other units, it's not listed, so it would not, if it's not in a contract, it would not go forward.
Right, okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Questions? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, before we take a vote, does anyone have any questions? Kevin, you look like you might have a question, that's when.
No, I just have to recuse myself from the Unit A portion of this.
Right, okay. Um, well, we could take two votes. Or you could recuse yourself from the whole vote.
Whatever you think is best.
Don't really know. Why don't we take two votes? So I'm sorry, April and Mary, let's go back and we'll have a motion just to approve the incentive for Unit A.
So I rescind my motion.
Okay.
So do I have to second that?
Uh, sorry, no, rescind your second, Mary.
Okay, I rescind my second.
Okay, and now we'll ask for a motion to approve the Unit A portion only.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so be three, zero, one. And then I would ask for a motion to approve.
Two, zero, one? Oh, no, three, I'm so sorry, my brain just compute that, okay.
That's okay, that's all right. All right, so then I would ask for a motion to approve the retirement incentive for Unit B, C, D, the custodians, and the cafeteria workers and bus drivers.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so four, zero, zero.
Thank you very much. Um, oh, that just, I've already covered that. All right, so the next would be, I would ask that the committee approve proposed pay increase for this year only. For unit, for Unit A substitute, uh, this is for coverages. So for Unit A, they currently receive $22 an hour when they're doing coverages during the day. For Unit C, they currently receive $12. I would propose it goes to 20. And if it's an all-day coverage for a pair professional to cover for a teacher, they have a forty-five, a $33 differential. I would ask that it be $45. The reason why is because we've limited people into our building, we're really short at times for subs. And to ask teachers to give up prep time is very difficult with their added duties. And so this is just an incentive to help that go a little bit smoother. So I would ask the committee to please approve the following increases.
Is this one that we will have to break down so that Kevin can vote as well?
Um.
Like separate Unit A and the remaining two categories?
Yeah, but then we would have to do four votes, so Kevin, I think we'll just ask him to recuse himself from the whole vote.
Okay.
On this one. Kim, um, I just have a question, is this something that you're proposing or is it something that was requested?
No, the WEA has not requested this. This is something that I'm proposing after speaking with our administrators. Because we're, you know, as we start to bring students back and go to five-day-a-week, we're really concerned about coverages. So this, we feel like this will be a added assistance.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'm gonna.
Okay, roll call vote, April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so it's three, zero, one.
Okay, thank you, okay. Um, the next would be to increase subpay for this year. We're finding a very difficult time to attract substitute teachers when we're trying to hire permanent intermittent. So I would ask that currently the substitute teachers receive $97 a day. I would ask that it be moved to 118. Pair professionals receive $87. I would ask that it be moved to 100. And in the past several weeks, we have been advertising to bring in people to be pair professionals, substitutes, or teacher substitutes. And we simply do not have applicants. We're hoping that this helps. We know that other area schools have also increased theirs. And so we're losing out because we cannot match salary.
Okay, and this is not part of the contract, is that true?
That's true, this is not.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any questions? Kevin, it's not part of the contract, so you can vote on this one, okay. So we'll ask for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, roll call, Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four, zero, zero.
Thank you. All right, next, I would just like to run through the capital project updates that we've been doing. You know, this has been a really busy time for us, project-wise, since about last March, when we found ourselves without students. It was really a good time to start doing some upgrades. And then as we started getting ready to bring people back and looking at our HVAC, we've been wanting to do some repair on that for several years and simply have not had the, the funds to do so. The last town meeting, the town voted 500,000 to spend. And so we've been putting it toward upgrading our capitals. And we've also had some other monies from past town meetings that we've used as well. We've been and will be receiving significance funds from the government that we've been able to continue these upgrades. So let me just run it quickly through. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. So looking at the middle school projects, we're looking at doing flooring and tiling, and that's in different parts of the building. The gym, I believe, is probably, has not been painted for many years, if ever. And you see the cost. The bleachers are the original bleachers. And it's truly a safety issue because there's no motor that helps bring them in and out, so this would motorize them. There are two chillers that have been in non-working repair for years and years and years. I think some squirrels ate their wires at one point. And so this will allow us to replace two chillers. If you notice, some of the exterior steel doors, they're rusting out at the bottom, and so this will replace two of them. And then also, there's a fire door that has had a crack on it that has been noted, and so this will replace the interior door. At the high school, we're looking, we have replaced textbooks, they've been ordered, and this would be for science, it's chemistry and biology, I believe. Uh, window repairs, now this is ongoing. And we will be replacing and repairing the windows in every classroom. This will allow the windows to safely open, and right now, it's a little bit dangerous if, and very difficult to open. So this will take care of, of this. Um, the front doors also needed replacement, so that will be done. The stair treads have worn out, uh, this will be replaced. It should have been done either in February over the vacation, or it will be done in the, over the April vacation. The scoreboards are in dire needs. We were starting to have some significant problems with them. So we've replaced the gym scoreboard and also the softball field. The gatemen have, will be replacing the scoreboard out on Spillane Field. Um, for the district projects, we have purchased a tractor, the, the tractor that they've been using is probably 25 years old. And we're to the part, uh, the time now where it's difficult to get parts, so we will be replacing that. And last year, if you remember, we purchased a Kubota for the district use, we house it at the high school. And we're purchasing a brush that will go on the front to help brush off snow, as well as a snow blower that will be placed on the front of it. And what we also do is we maintain the area around Town Hall. And this just will help us do a better job and a much faster job. Um, we've also upgraded a van, and that's with transportation. And that was through COVID funds. And we've made a number of purchases of backpack sprayers, which is, allows us to come into a classroom, spray it down. It sanitizes everything and we're good to go. So really, the total that we've spent is 226,766 dollars. By the time we finish with all our projects that we're working on, both the middle school and the high school will be in very good shape, with the exception of the middle school roof. And so that still does need to be addressed. And we're going to be applying next year with MSBA when they present the rapid projects. So we hope that at that point, we will be able to move that forward. Um, we have projects that are also under construction. We will be making some purchases for classroom furniture and teacher chairs, both at the middle and high school. Many, many of the desks are original to the building, and so that's 30 or 25 years old, so it's time to replace them. We will be doing that. We'll be asking at fall town meeting to purchase a dump truck. Right now, we're pricing it at about 57,000. One of the issues we have with that is it's been with the salt in the sand that we have to dump. It's rusting it out, and we're to the point now where the frame's beginning to rust. We would make that purchase now, but we simply do not have time to get this article in front of you and then to the board of selectmen and to town meetings, so we'll delay it until the fall. We're getting ready to make some purchases for laptops and projection boards. As you know, the elementary in every classroom will have a projection board. So one of the things that we hope to do and we plan on doing is to put a projection board in every classroom at the high school and middle school. Um, you know, we've been rolling the Chromebooks out now for about six or seven years. And when we first did it, you know, you know, some people were a little hesitant, and I mean staff-wise, to use them. The position that we've really found ourselves in since March, our teachers have become so tech-savvy. And what they're doing with the Chromebook, um, it's, it's incredible. But what we're finding is the Chromebook is just not, uh, doesn't have enough memory, doesn't have enough power, and we're really being hampered. Why some of our teachers are being hampered to do some of the things that they would like to do. So we're exploring HPs and other laptops that we're going to need to purchase so we can continue moving academics forward for our staff. And it's a really good prod, uh, problem to have. I think six or seven years ago, many people would have been surprised if we were at this point. So I, I'm very happy to bring this one forward. The darkroom, we're looking to remodel it, and interestingly enough, we're having a very difficult time getting some contractors in because they're so busy. But we'll continue, and that's our hope to get that done. Our internal clock and bell system at the high school need to be replaced, and I think that's about 24,000. We have a fire alarm replacement that needs to be done at the high school, and we've been nursing that along for the last couple of years, just simply because we didn't have the funds. And that will cost 245,900 dollars. We hope to have that done over the summer. And finally, we're looking to really remodel the old Boys and Girls Club. Uh, we use it, our, our PE classes and our athletics after school, we have a weight room in there. And it's in pretty dilapidated shape. So we're going to be walking the building and, and getting an estimate on what it's going to cost to bring that up. So it's in a better condition for our students. So as you can see, we've been pretty busy, um, will continue to be. We're constantly upgrading our HVAC system. And by the time we're finished with all of the upgrades, it will be, you know, there will be no, no more issues. So if you have any questions about any of the projects, I would be very happy to talk more about them.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, it sounds awesome that we're able to hopefully, you know, get all of this done and keep things rolling forward.
Yeah, I agree, we're in a really good shape, and I commend you for, uh, being kind of proactive also. I know these are some things that need to be done, but also looking forward to seeing what can be done as well.
Thank you.
Has there ever been any, have we ever looked into it as a district, just off the top of my head here, of, of any kind of solar to offset uh, energy prices, like solar can, I know they're doing parking lot solar canopies, and it's all sorts of things like that. Is that something we've ever looked at in the past?
Um, we, we have explored some of that, and I do know that the the elementary roof will be solar-ready, and so we could explore it from there. And so we could explore it from there. And I know uh Mr. Palladino would dearly love to have solar over at the high school. The question is who would get the profit? So, you know, we're, we're looking at how we're going to move that forward.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really great to be able to to look at these projects and talk about doing them instead of just looking at them and talking about what we can't do. But now to be able to talk about what you're able to do, it's it's really great.
Yeah, and I think that when people are allowed back in, the public's allowed back in our buildings, you'll be amazed at the change that you'll see. So we're excited for that time too. Okay, I have the principals, I know that they're in the waiting rooms. Um, they're here tonight, so if you have questions as we move on to the next one, um, if we could let them in, they're here to answer any building-specific questions. So as we look at return to school, um, the commissioner really changed the landscape on us this week. When he came out and he said elementary students would return on or before April fifth. And middle school students would return on the twenty-eighth. Well, for us, if our middle school students are going, our high school students need to go as well. And that's for transportation issues. We do not have enough busing, um, nor do we have enough drivers that we could have three different runs. And so when we return on the twenty-eighth with middle school, our high school students will also return. Yesterday afternoon, I sent a letter to all parents and guardians along with a survey. And this survey must, and I underline, must be completed by March sixteenth. And if your child is attending one of our schools, either remote or in the hybrid, we really need you to fill out this survey. And if not, you're going to be getting contacted by the school because we need to know what your child will be, what you hope your child will be doing for the rest of the year. And your choices are very simple. Either they will return five days in person, full days, or they'll be remote for the rest of the year. Um, and that's it. That's what the uh commissioner has said, the governor's supporting, and those are our options. They did offer a waiver process. Um, there will be very few waivers given that will go from these dates. We did apply for two waivers. One was to bring everyone back on the twenty-sixth. And the other one was to bring fifth grade back when we bring the middle school. And as our fifth graders are part of the middle school, then it's appropriate for them to return at on the twenty-eighth. I had a conversation with the commissioner's office today. And they indicated that the second waiver that pertained to fifth grade would be approved and that we would be allowed to just to defer fifth graders coming back until the twenty-eighth. They did not uh speak very favorably on the second or on the first um waiver about delaying our return. And I'll wait to hear, but I do not anticipate that they will approve that. Um, so what to expect? Regardless if, when everyone comes back, everyone will continue to wear masks. It's non-negotiable unless you have a medical reason. Classroom seating will change. Classroom seats will now be three feet apart. Presently, they're six feet. They'll be um in order to get everyone in and to follow the commissioner's guidelines, it will be three feet. And the commissioner has said from really all, all this school year, classroom seating could be three feet. We have chosen to stay with six feet until we make this move in April. Lunchroom seating, how however, will remain at six feet apart. Everybody faces one way and lunches will be shortened. We will continue not to allow visitors into our buildings. Um, you know, everybody has done very well this year. We have had a few cases, we would like to keep it like that. And so we are going to be continuing that policy. Transportation, they have taken away all restrictions when we transport students with the exception of students was must wear masks and drivers must wear masks. And windows would be open two inches. If it's in inclement weather, they said it could be every other window. Um, and this is certainly very drastic, a very drastic change from what it was when we first started school. Um, we're going, I'm going to be meeting with the drivers' union tomorrow and talk to them about the lifting of restrictions and how we're going to move forward with that. So what I have for you next is this is the results that I've had from the survey. And this is just from yesterday, probably at two o'clock until this morning around um ten o'clock. So I wanted to break this down for you just so you could kind of see where we're at. So if you, if you notice, our kindergarten, right now, there are fifty-nine parents that have said their students will come back five days a week full-time. And there'll be twelve students that will remain remote. So if you look on down the column, that kind of gives you an idea of where we're at from returning to five-day-a-week to keeping your child remote. Now, if a parent or guardian would say, I want my child to be remote this year. That's what they fill out on the survey. And in three or four weeks, they say, oh, I really want my child to come back. We will, we will put them on a list and there'll be a transition period. And the transition period will take as long as it takes for us to safely move that child back into the building without destroying the three feet apart. We will not change or go off of that to accommodate any child who started, who is remote, but now wants to shift into hybrid. It will be if there's availability. So that's very important to understand that once we start this, we will maintain the three feet. One of our concerns is if we get to a point where we're not able to maintain the three feet in a classroom, we're going to have to be looking for other spots. And so that's why it's so important for us to get this information back as quickly as possible. So I really ask for the cooperation of the parents and guardians and to have that survey completed. Um, so I know the principals are here. If you have specific questions that you would like to ask the the various buildings, please do so. And if it's a general question, any of us will jump in.
Um, I just have a question about the spacing. Will the teacher stations still be considered, kept six feet apart away from the students?
Yes, the teachers will still be six feet apart. And I, that was one thing that they did say. Adults, we're going to try to maintain the six feet, six feet to six feet for adults. One of the purchases that we made um recently were standing desks on wheels for staff if they wanted one. And that way they can move in and out, uh, especially when they're doing synchronous and asynchronous teaching. It just has made that a little bit easier for them.
I have a question about the lunches. Um, you said that you were going to shorten the the lunches. Does that, like, well, how does that look?
So right now, when we brought our students back uh this week, we've shortened the lunches already. That's the time that they'll remain. Right now, our elementary are twenty minutes and our middle, high school are twenty-five minutes. And you might think, whoa, how do they get through the lunch line, etc.? Well, we're not sending students through the lunch line. For the elementary, we have the pro, the food out for them. We have the straws already in the milk just because that's a really high-contact time between student and staff. So we thought if we could eliminate it, it would also help uh with the speed. We're working with our food service people that any product that goes into the student's lunch is easy to open. And students can open it by themselves for the most part. So for the mo, so when a student uh has to go through the lunch line, that of course takes time. There's no going through lunch lines now. Twenty minutes is more than enough time. And, you know, we certainly will watch and if we need to be uh make some adjustments, we will. And I do believe that Bethany and Joan are on here. So if you have something that you want to, because you've witnessed the lunches, so how's it going?
So I'll speak for a minute. The lunches are going really well. Um, we have somebody stationed at the door and they come up into the cafeteria to sanitize their hands. They take their lunch if they need one. Many students are still bringing their own lunch. We have assigned seating for them. We practiced all of this last week. They sit, we um methodically tell them when they can remove their masks, how to, where to put their masks, because we don't want them on the tables. They eat their lunch, we give them the two-minute warning. Um, we tell them how to, to put their masks back on, get any rubbish that they have. They throw away their lunch on the way out and then they sanitize once again. So um they are really loving the fact that they are there, that they are having lunch. Um, they can see, you know, some of their friends at lunchtime. Um, they do all face the same way. Um, lunches haven't been, you know, as quiet as they've been this year um in previous years. But uh it's also nice to see their full face and see them smiling. So um it's, it's been very smooth.
Uh, same with Deaconess, uh, our students are enjoying the cafeteria. They're six feet apart. I'm utilizing the gymnasium to keep um that going. Once we go to April fifth, I will have to have possibly uh four lunches. I'll be using the cafeteria and the gymnasium. Um, but the children are enjoying lunch together. Um, they talk while they're eating, yelling, they talk across, across the tables to one another. But it's a joy to watch them, so very appreciative of that. And it's working very well. It was a new routine at the beginning for both the, you know, the cafeteria workers and uh our, our lunch staff and uh, you know, the staff that work in the cafeterias. But uh we've got it down to a patent, patent now and we're doing well.
I would also just share that works, uh, our cafeteria folks are still satellite-ing lunches out for pickups out in the community. So not only are we feeding students in the buildings, we're feeding students in the community. Other questions?
Um, I have a question about cleaning. The um, so the, will the custodians, what kind of changes will they make around this new schedule?
Um, for the most part, not a lot. Um, they've been, we'll keep up the sanitation, the cleaning. It'll be delayed a little bit because students will be in the building longer. But for the most part, there'll be no change.
Okay. Okay. Questions in the chat? Um, about cleaning, okay, and about dismissal times. So will the dismissal times, arrival and dismissal, will they be the same as they are right now for the extended day?
Um, for the middle school, high school, they'll go back to what they were pre-COVID. And for the elementaries, they will remain pretty much the same.
Okay, well, because they're already at those times, is that true or about it? Okay. Okay, and go ahead, Kevin.
I was just gonna say, it sounds good hearing someone say pre-COVID. We're doing something like we did pre-COVIDly, thank you.
Right. And again, um, I asked this question last time about communication to the families. Um, you know, did you have any issues communicating the changes out to the families? Or was every, did everyone get the message and, you know, about the, like, about the changes you made this week? Were there any issues communicating that out?
Well, I wouldn't know because they've not said that. But we've shot it out on um our blast, we've put it on Facebook. Today at six-thirty, there was a phone message go, to go out. We've put it back out on Facebook, we shot it back out. Um, you know, and I, we're not really sure where else to get people's attention. So they will open their emails. Um, but it, if they don't, they're going to be getting phone calls because we have got to know what they would like their child to do.
And so I'm sorry, I was not implying that you didn't make every effort to reach people. I just know that despite your best efforts, sometimes it just doesn't work. So that I was, I know, I saw a lot of the communication. I know that you've all worked really hard to get that word out there. That wasn't my.
Right, it has appeared to go very smoothly. Very smoothly.
You know, and so once, once I gather this information, what happens every day? You know, with the help of our administrators, we're breaking this data down. So every day, what came in from the day before, you know, to the period of where we stopped it to break, break it apart, we're giving back to the building so they can start working on uh breaking this up to understand where they need help, where they don't need help, how are they going to reconfigure? So this is a project that is going right now. And that's why it's so important for people to please promptly answer that survey so we can not get behind. The other piece is, once that closes, the communication now is going to shift to the building principals because they're going to be giving building-specific information out to their families. And it won't come so much from the district. So people need to be aware of, there's going to be a shift coming very shortly.
Okay. And the breakdown between remote, between the students who are going to stay remote and the ones who are going to come in person, do you see an increase in remote wanting to come back to school or is that percentage kind of staying the same?
Uh, we've seen an uptick. We've also seen an uptick in uh people who had homeschooled their child, child or children and have started to re-enroll their children.
Okay, so will that make a difference in the makeup of any classes at any level?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you know, and really I would say, once we get all of the information that we need, some students may not have their same teacher because we may need to pull a teacher back who's been doing remote to do in-person and then reshuffle students. Um, not ideal standard, but there's not been anything about this year that's been ideal.
Right, very true.
So should a majority of the kids, like, say, you know, very few choose to stay remote? Are we going to be able to say if, you know? So, so you stay remote and more decide to come back in? Are we going to be able to handle that many? Or will there, like, say, if it's the majority? Because obviously, we haven't had anything at full capacity this entire year. Um, I know that with the three-feet um change from the six-feet, how, how is that going to be? Should, um, I know that you've only posted the, the day-one um survey information. Um, but should more of those students choose the in-person versus the remote? How would we handle such a large um population coming back if that be the case?
Um, I think really for us, it will be the three-feet in defined spaces that will be able to have the students safely with the three-feet. Um, and that's really what we need to know. We may And that's really what we need to know. We may need to look for other spaces to go, other spaces for classrooms. We may need to take some classrooms that have not been used for certain things and use them for certain things. You know, we're still in those planning stages right now.
Okay. And you would, you would kind of already answered my previous question. Well, the question I was going to ask about those who didn't respond to the survey, um, or to any of the social, about calling those students to find out. So you kind of preemptively answered, that was another question that I would have had. So, um, I think that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Yeah. And I will say that the commissioner has made it pretty clear that remote is only for the remainder of this year. At this time, they have, he has absolutely no intention of having remote option for next year.
Okay.
All right.
No other questions? All right. Well, thank you. We look forward to it more as your plan progresses.
That concludes everything I have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So we will move on to the report of the school committee, which tonight consists of the report from the policy review committee. And Kevin is going to address that.
So we looked at three policies. The first that you have in your packet was the payment procedures. And at the suggestion of the business manager, we wanted to, um, add one more person to have the ability to sign, uh, weekly warrants. And we changed the language specifically to the chair, the vice chair or the secretary in order to do that, to provide greater flexibility, uh, to get those things signed on time.
Okay. I just want to point out, I haven't been late signing them, right? Right?
Just in case.
Okay.
It's already an option.
Well, I think there's two, Mary.
Okay.
So when we change this policy, that, that's a good point though, because the town really is the one that you know, authorizes the signature, right? So once we change this policy, then the town will accept that. Kim, is that true? Okay. Okay. Um, and I just want to point out, when I first came on the committee, we were going to the office and signing it in person. And we didn't get them by email. And so I really appreciate that we all are able to get them by email and get all of that information. That, that wasn't always the case. So I just appreciate that. Okay. So are you looking for a motion to approve this as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four zero zero.
Uh, the second policy that's in your packet was, uh, file J H A E implementation of life-threatening allergy treatment. And the nurses looked at this. There was really no significant changes other than we wanted to, uh, fix some spacing issues. And also refer to the Department of Education as Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve as, as amended?
Second.
Can we roll call Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
And the third policy, uh, file J H administration of medications. Again, the nurses looked at this. Mrs. Siemens noted that phone numbers would have to be changed once we have the new elementary school open. And we added some language that mask had recommended about students self-administering certain types of medication. Other than that, do we know other changes?
Okay. So does that mean that students would be allowed to self-administer?
Certain ones, yes. Students with dyspeicosis and students with diabetes can, uh, contain certain, can carry with them certain medications at the approval of the school nurse.
I was, my question was going to be at any age. So with the approval of the nurse, that answers that.
Yes.
Okay. And then these other attachments are just part of that policy. Is that true, these authorization forms?
Right. We went through those and there were no changes on those forms.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve that policy as amended?
So moved.
Okay, roll call, Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Is that the law policy? Okay, thank you. Um, the only other thing I wanted to bring up under, uh, school committee reports is our meetings. So I did send an email to the town administrator and the chair of the selectmen inquiring about being able to return to in-person meetings. Um, I'm not sure that that's even possible. I haven't even spoken to W C T V about that. Uh, but I just wanted to see what the committee thought about that. If we were able to return to in-person meetings, would you be agreeable to that?
Oh, I would be agreeable to that as long, I mean, when we were in person with the dividers, um, sort of before they closed down the town hall. I felt that with, you know, masked and things like that, I felt that that was an appropriate spacing. I know that it is difficult with public participation for, um, the in-person, especially if they're not allowing for outside visitation. So I don't know if that's something, whereas we had attempted the hybrid meeting for participation, should we physically be able to go back, but not be able to have necessarily, um, the public attend? Um, if, if there was something to work out where people could still kind of, uh, do both until things are more moved further with, you know, either everyone who's either on the committee being vaccinated or working towards, um, you know, more vaccinations and more, um, protocols lifted, I, I would be comfortable with that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I agree with April on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree as well. And, you know, when the other boards go back, I think that it would be appropriate for us to go back.
Okay. Well, like I said, I just sent that email. I don't know what the status of that is, but just wanted to ask you all what you thought. So thank you.
I do believe there was another question in the chat. I don't, I, I believe that may have been for, um, for Kim's presentation. I don't know if anyone saw that.
I do see it, but I'll just let her notice on Kim an email and she'll answer that question.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was noted.
Okay. All right. Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And before we vote, I did, should have said this earlier when the principals were still here. I just wanted to say thank you to them for being here. Thank you to all of you for all of the, the work that's being done to make all of these changes happen. You know, just when you get one plan in place, now you gotta rework the whole plan. So thank you to everyone for all that, for all of that work.
And I do have to say, I still feel, even with all of the changes, I feel that Wareham has still gone above and beyond in, in both tackling, when we first went remote at the end of, you know, a year ago. And, you know, in, in working with the transitions and trying to incorporate the community's input, the family's input, the administrators, working with the unions. I know that none of this has been easy. Working with the Department of Education, dealing with protocols from the CDC and the governor and things of that nature. So I think that the entire district deserves a lot of credit for all of the hard work behind the scenes. And, you know, I think the public doesn't realize how much work beyond the work day that you guys do to make sure that all of this stuff can happen for the kids in the safest way possible.
Okay. So with that, thank you, April. With that, we'll call for a vote to adjourn. Uh, Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mary? And myself, yes. Four zero zero. Good night. Thank you, everyone.